Good evening, I'd like to welcome you into the May twenty nine, two thousand and nineteen biweekly meeting.
Biweekly meeting.
Regular meeting of the Milton Select Board. Begin by calling everyone in order and ask everyone please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, which is to confirm future meeting dates. The board will meet again on June twelfth and on June twenty sixth to discuss plans and there'll be also discussion plans for any training due and which will be posted when we come to an agreed upon date, which I hope you can do that tonight.
Sure.
If we can. Item four, citizens speak. I just want to remind everyone, as they approach it, please clearly state their name and address and there'll be a sign in sheet provided. I understand that our state senator is here tonight, Mr. Timblety. If you would come and speak for us, we'd be...I did not know you were coming, but we are very grateful that you came.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you, glad to be here.
We've seen you a lot this week.
Yeah, we have seen a lot of each other. We have seen a lot of each other, thank you very much. I'll make sure that I sign in right now.
No, you don't have to, it's alright.
I gotta make sure I sign in.
Thank you very much. No, I appreciate the time and I'll be very brief, but it's a privilege to be here in front of our select board. I just came simply to give a budget update. We, as many of you are aware, underwent a Senate budget exercise last week and I filed many amendments, but I just wanted to let you know about the ones that are germane to the town of Milton. First of all, I filed an amendment to obtain monies for an electric vehicle charging station, which I worked with Mr. Dennehy on. I was able to obtain seventy-two hundred dollars for the town of Milton through the Senate budget. Now, of course, this will all be subject to conference committee, but I'm confident this will survive the conference committee. Seventy-two hundred dollars to purchase a new electric vehicle charging station at the decision, of course, the town government to decide where to place that charging station. I also was able to obtain through one of my amendments thirty thousand dollars to obtain a new set of street hockey boards. In the last budget exercise, I obtained a similar...we've had numerous conversations.
Very popular.
And I thank you, Mr. Dennehy, for pricing that out for me initially with your background in the hockey industry. But to me, street hockey is a great sport and a great activity because everybody can play. Everybody can play. It's extremely cost effective and basically you need ten dollars, I think, to buy a T-shirt. We've had a wonderful street hockey program start up in the town of Milton under the aegis of John Shea and Jamie Heggie, so I just figured this would be great because we could place them in different parts of the town of Milton. Also, I obtained through one of my amendments that I filed twenty thousand dollars for traffic calming measures for the Milton Police, which obviously, Mr. Wells, you're well aware of.
Chief King will be very grateful for that.
Yeah, Chief King, and Chief King was terrific. He also priced out what he could do with twenty thousand dollars in terms of details for setting up speed patrols.
Okay.
Directed speed patrols in the town, which obviously is a life and death issue sadly here on the town. I also filed an amendment to mandate the Department of Public Health do an airplane noise study for all CAC communities to study the impact and, of course, the deleterious impact of flight over flights. And obviously, we had an unfair and inequitable system foisted upon us back in December third, twenty thirteen with the next gen system. This would very simply order and mandate the DPH conduct a public health study. It is something that I put in the budget last year successfully in the Senate. It didn't survive the conference committee, but we're hoping, hopeful again, that it will work. I'll be lobbying the conference committee strenuously, of course, and on the House side, we have Rep. Kalanade and Rep. Driscoll who are trying their very best for the town as well. Also, for the third consecutive year, I filed an amendment to seek thirty thousand dollars for our substance abuse coalition in town, and the amendment was successfully adopted. It's an issue that I did my maiden speech on back in twenty seventeen, which signifies how important it is to myself and to all of us. Obviously, we're in a national epidemic right now and I believe our substance abuse coalition does a wonderful job here in town under the leadership of Mrs. Cancela and Lori Stillman.
I'm sure they'll be very grateful for that.
And they're great partners to work with, as we all know, and I'm a big believer in taking the dollars and putting them in hands of the people on the front lines like yourselves and our substance abuse coalitions who can make good decisions for all of us. I also filed an amendment seeking five hundred thousand dollars for Ulan Rink, which was successfully adopted. Obviously, we have a great partnership with Curry College and we need, we're desperately in need of capital improvements. And the first priority, and I specified this in my amendment, was to erect a women's locker room with full accommodations. And the remaining three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that amendment will be, obviously, I'll leave that up to the experts with DCR and with the town of Milton, but I believe that'll be a great first step. And I also believe that amendment, I'm confident, will survive conference committee. And finally, I filed an amendment seeking five hundred thousand dollars for Trailside Museum. That, too, was successfully adopted. That's something we, as all of us as children who lived in the area, benefited in one way, shape, or form, and it's something that I see my nieces and nephew benefit from now. It's something I grew up with, with my mother taking us all up there, and to me, it's a great regional asset and it brings the Blue Hills to life for so many schools around the area, particularly our own schoolchildren, and this will keep that wonderful institution running smoothly. They've sustained some budget cuts over the years, but I believe this will get them back to where they were. And overall, the Senate version of the budget is a forty-two point seven billion dollar document, which is similar to the House in terms of, I know what's on all of our minds, Chapter seventy. Chapter seventy monies that will go to the town of Milton are identical with the town of Milton in the House of Representatives. Of course, we have a conference committee coming up that will be resolved sometime, I would estimate, in the month of June, and our fiscal year, of course, starts on July one. So I just wanted to relay that information to you folks and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Anyone?
And take it from there. And I thank you, obviously, for the opportunity.
No, thank you for coming in. I wish I knew you were coming, would've made sure this was an agenda item, but thank you now.
Well, happy to be here and happy to sign the sign in sheet.
Thank you, Senator.
That's gonna make the tidbits, it's gonna make the tidbits of the tires next week.
Thank you very much, and hopefully the Bruins will win tonight.
Yes, they will.
I suspect your meeting might be accelerated tonight.
Well, we'll see how the new chair does, and he takes over in about fifteen minutes.
And of course, Mr. Wells, thank you for your service as the chair.
Thank you.
And congratulations to our chair-elect and vice chair-elect. Look forward to working with each and every one of you in the year ahead.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for having me.
Well, thank you, my pleasure, and I would be remiss if I did not introduce my deputy chief of staff, Lauren Cancela, is here tonight.
We know her well, we know her. I was gonna say hi, but she was off camera.
Who does wonderful work, so thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
And please have a good night. Thank you.
Go Bruins, thank you very much, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Senator.
Okay, do we have anyone else for citizens speak? Please come forward. Thank you, Lauren, too.
Good evening, I'm Suzanne Knight. I live at twenty-five Spafford Road, and I'm here to inform the residents of Milton and perhaps you, but I think you already know that Boston University School of Public Health, Department of Environmental Health, is in the planning phase of a multi-site noise measurement study to be completed this summer. Milton's involvement is through Dr. Cindy Christensen, Boston Fair Skies efforts, and Milton residents who choose to participate. This is a study conducted by a graduate program at a private university and will not involve any public agency at any level of government, although the final report will be publicly shared. We are asking for Milton residents to let us know if they are interested in participating as possible noise measurement sites, and if so, all volunteers should provide their name, address, email, and phone number to dr. Cindy Christensen at clcmilton@gmail dot com. Volunteering now does not mean you are committed, just that you are interested and wanna know more. It also does not mean the researchers, researchers will be able to measure at your location. They expect to choose sixteen sites, most of which will be single-family homes, we assume, and want to be able to consider areas with different aviation noise levels. Even residents in quieter parts of town are encouraged to allow the study team to take measurements at their locations. One of the requirements, requirements of the two thousand and eighteen FAA reauthorization is for the FAA to release results from its noise survey that ended in two thousand and seventeen and focused on twenty airport regions in the country. The agency has stalled, unfortunately, release of those survey, survey findings since that time when they were originally going to be released to the public in two thousand and seventeen. Our group's goal is to have a scientifically solid research study of our own that shows the burden of aircraft over Milton. We also think this study can be generalized to communities across the region and the country. Below is a draft timeline from the memorandum of understanding. There will be the study recruitment, and that's going on right now through June fifteenth, and so far, that's been updated, not just fifty-four, it's all the way up to sixty now. Locations have been offered. That means basically sixty, you know, people have offered their, their location in the town, which is very nice. And community sound monitoring will take place between June fifteenth, from June fifteenth through September of this year. Volunteers do not have to do anything with the boxes and monitors. There's a cord connecting a box to the noise monitor, which is typically kept outside. The study team will adhere the microphone to a railing or ledge or set the noise monitor on a tripod if needed. Milton residents who cannot participate as onsite noise measurement locations still have a role to play in the study. The second phase of the study will provide opportunity to, for townwide input. The last two pages of this, of this document here are Massport's two thousand and fifteen aviation noise estimates for Milton. Red has the highest noise, yellow the lowest, and Dr. Christensen's the next one, her more detailed D N L levels that are dots within the town map with the flight paths also shown. We plan to keep residents informed as the study progresses.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Item number five, I see we have ten minutes aside for this, it's gonna take two. We have a discussion approval of the reconstitution of the board offices, which are the election of a new select board chair, vice chair, and secretary through May of two thousand and twenty. I don't remember how the process went, but I believe, did the chair make the motion, I believe? I'll make the motion.
I think, I think you, yeah, I think you wanna open it for nominations, have any nominations, and then close the nominations and have a vote.
Okay, I'll open the floor for nominations for chair, and I will, I'll nominate Vice Chair Michael Zoussis chair. Have a second.
Second. And then, and then I have to accept the nomination, that's it. So I'll accept the nomination.
What is it, DNC?
That's it, that's right, yeah, that's right. Yeah, I'll accept the nomination.
That's it, I take it back, it's my turn. I then, do I hear any further, I hope I'm doing this right, do I hear any further nominations for chair? So I'll close nominations for chair and open nominations for vice chair.
If, yeah, if we, if we'll do this all at once, I'll nominate Melinda Collins as, as vice chair.
Second.
Second, any discussion, I'll get second to my kid. Any discussion? Okay, I'll close the nominations for vice chair, open nominations for secretary.
I'll nominate Tony Farrington as secretary.
Second.
Any other discussions, any nominations? I'll close nominations for secretary and hereby I'll, I'll make a motion to vote on Michael Zoussis's chair, Melinda Collins's vice chair, and Anthony Farrington as secretary. That's a motion, I made that as a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Congratulations. So I have a gift for you before I leave.
For you too.
So one of these, when you sit next to someone for a whole year, you, you, you learn so much about them from their body languages, and one of the things about Mr. Zoussis is he hates when it gets late at night, you can tell. When we start getting near ten o'clock, I can look at him and I can tell he's always so...and my wife is an avid long-distance rider, and the things that gets her through, and she, she never can stay awake past eight o'clock, so I leave you with one of these five hour energies to keep in your pocket all the time.
That's fantastic, thank you, thank you, that's great.
For those nights, because I have a feeling, even though we're still gonna be here late at night, so...
I, I'm gonna challenge this process as being a violation of the Constitution.
Okay, it's on the agenda.
Why?
Why?
Because it's obvious it was done before.
I didn't hear what you said.
I didn't hear that.
It was obviously agreed upon before in some sort of a fashion.
No, it wasn't, no, it wasn't. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats. I'm getting, I'm moving, I'm changing seats.
Are we gonna move?
I'm changing seats. Sure, you're the chair.
All right, well, thank you, and let's, let's, before we move along, I do want to recognize Mr. Wells' efforts over the last year. Richard Wells is and forever shall be the first chair of the twenty-first century, five-member Milton Select Board.
It's gonna go on my grave.
That's it, and, and Mr. Wells led us through the, this unknown forest of the five-member select board, five-member select board over the last year, and in my view, did so with, with humor and with courtesy and with success. It was often said, at least I heard it often said in town hall, that, that you were the hardest-working retired person in Milton.
Thank God, that's over.
I think, I think the only thing I would quibble with would, would, would be to say the hardest-working retired person, I think it could well be said you're the hardest-working person in Milton over the last year.
I don't know if that's true, but...
And, and I think it's fair to say that you have set a tone and a standard over the last year, and I can only hope to live up to that tone and to that standard. And for that, I think this board and the town owes you a debt of gratitude for all your work in the last year and all your work to come. And, and on behalf of the board, we have a little token.
Is it cash?
For you as well, no, it's not cash.
Not good.
An appreciation of your efforts over the last year.
Thank you very much. I, I said this, and Katie was here when I arrived, so for anyone who does come in, you learn very quickly that it's one thing to run for an office, it's another thing to sit in the office and do the work that's associated, and we all learn very quickly just how hard it is, and we don't always agree all the time, but I think deep down inside each of us, we all care deeply about this community and each day, we try to do our best to do that. And I'm grateful to everyone, I mean, for me, I was fortunate in that I spent thirty-two years working for this town and had a dad who worked for it for forty-three years, and you're only as good as the people who influenced you in life, and that includes everyone sitting in here tonight, so especially to Michael and Jan, Christine, everyone, all the officers, all the committees, and especially all of you, thank you very much, and you're gonna do a great job.
Well, I appreciate that.
You're on your own, good luck.
Thank you, yes, thanks a lot. Just a couple of quick... Just a couple of quick things we have on here under the agenda item process and meeting locations. Just a couple of things on, on process. We have already adopted a couple of policies on process, and we have that, we have that to, to, to direct us and to guide us as we go forward. My view of the role of the chair is that the chair, under our policies and under our practice, has no more authority to act than any other member of this board. No member of this board has any authority to do anything on behalf of the town, except by our acting as a group. This board is an executive body, but it's an executive body that only acts through group actions. And no member of this board has any authority beyond that, and I, and that includes the chair. My view of the chair's role is really to serve the board and to serve the members, to make sure that the members' issues are brought to the agenda, to make sure that the members have the, the materials that they need to be ready to talk about and deliberate on the issues, and to, to make sure that deliberation and voting proceeds in an expeditious and, and fair manner during the, during the meetings, so that we can get things done in an expedient way and we can act on behalf of the town. So, so those are the things, again, we've, we've enacted some of these policies, but those are the things that, that I'd like to make sure we continue to do over the next, over the next year. One thing that, in one policy, I do want to point out that we have adopted is about the conduct of the meetings. We have a policy in place now that says that, that we will, we will conduct the business of the meeting as expeditiously as prudence and good order permit. Board members shall refrain from introducing new or unrelated topics into discussions of items on the formal agenda. Items may be deferred to the next meeting at the discretion of the chair. Board members shall focus on the discussion at hand, addressing their comments and questions to those present at the table. Board members shall refrain, for example, from engaging members of the audience in dialogue, playing to the cameras, which we have here, or otherwise failing to promote the efficient conduct of the board's business. And so, you know, the way that, that, that I've done this in the past is been a little bit more formal, and we can decide how we do things, but just in terms of people being recognized, making sure we recognize people in order, if you just want to indicate with your hand, if you want to be recognized, and then we'll try to keep it in order as we move around. But again, that's, that's subject to your all's wanting to do it that way, because it's the board that really decides and not me. So, that is, that is what I have to say on process. The other thing we can talk about in terms of process is the process for a retreat where we would review our goals and objectives. Mr. Wells mentioned earlier that we might try to do something in June, perhaps a Saturday. We've, we've held a retreat before on a Saturday morning, so, so I'm looking for the input of the board on that. Is some, some Saturday morning in June, might that work for the members of the board?
So.
Early part of June is pretty busy already.
Right, right. So it might be, it might be good to do before, before July. I think if we can try to get it done in the first month, that would be useful.
So I can do the 8th, the 15th, 20 seconds on the top, I mean, the.
Those are Saturdays?
Yeah, those are Saturdays, yeah. That's Milton Music Fest, which is kind of a tough day, but we're talking just morning.
Yeah, it'd be eight, I think we did it before, maybe 8:30 or 12 or 8:30 or 11.
I could probably do the morning on the 22nd, the 29th I definitely can't do.
Okay. So that's 8th, 15th, or 20 second.
Do anyone else rate?
8 is out for me. The MMA is having their regional conference that day, and 15th is also tough for me.
Okay. How does the 22nd look for people? Tony, how's the 22nd look? Good? All right, so we'll shoot for the 22nd.
And I'll make a call to see if I can secure the same room from Curry that we had last time.
Oh, that's great. That's great. Okay, all right, so we'll shoot.
Mo, are you all right with this? Okay.
And then the other agenda item we had under, under this item was meeting location. We have met at this location. The only question is whether we try a different location, for example, whether we try the studio at the high school, and the only purpose would be really to benefit the viewers at home. There are some limitations in terms of what can be done at this location, and so the question is whether we, whether we should try the studio at the high school to see if it's a better product for the citizens, and it's something that we can, we can do for them. So, so that's, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that as something for us to discuss, whether we want to try that. Any thoughts?
I'm fine trying it. I mean, the way you're gonna know one way or another, at least if you try it.
True. I'm open to trying it.
Yeah, let's try it.
I think it's difficult to lug all the computers and the equipment over here.
Right, yeah, that's true, yeah. I can see the look over here I'm getting.
Well, I actually talked to, talked to Jen, and there's a way to, there is a way to do it that minimizes the, the side on them, but.
I think the Select Board should meet at, you know, not a school building, but at a town building. But I'm open to trying it.
I, I.
We need a permanent home, and we don't have a permanent home yet.
Right.
But I think this has worked, although I've heard some complaints from viewers that the audio quality is not as good in this room as it is in the Cronin Room.
Right.
But I think this has worked reasonably well. I'd still like us to be able to move those weights or move the flags and try to dress this up a little bit better and rearrange the tables better so that Tony and I, or I guess Richard and I will be sitting on this side, you know, we can't even see some of the speakers who are coming up to the table, so that's been a problem.
But I think having the wing like this kind of fosters dialogue and back and forth between the members.
Hmm.
And I like the Cronin Room, because I think it promotes that sort of discussion and dialogue, which I think is important. I know you mentioned the high school last year, Mike, and we haven't tried it at all to the best of my recollection in one full year, so I think it's worth trying. I think we have to be sensitive to what the agenda items are and how much audience we would anticipate showing up, you know, arriving at the meeting, because the high school, where you sit is kind of tight, you know, so just, if you're sensitive to that. But it's worth, it's worth the shot.
Okay. Okay, all right, well, so we'll, we'll look at those different options for future meeting sites.
Let's try and have it in June, so we can know. But, I mean, I'd rather go there now when there's no school, when things may be quieter, just to get a, because I just came from, that's a busy place.
Mm-hmm.
It's a busy, even at night.
Okay. All right, anything further on that? Great. All right, item six, municipal broadband. We have a presentation from the chair of our municipal broadband committee, Joe Chamberlain. Hi, Joe.
Thank you for having me. And I'll just jump right in here. So it is a 25-slide presentation, but I gotta go fast. A lot of, a lot of what I put in the presentation is.
Didn't give enough time.
A lot of the content I put in the, in the presentation is for, is basically for the record, you know, because this will be posted on the website at, at some point, I assume. So I'm not gonna subject this meeting to be just reading every slide. So, the select, sorry, the broadband committee, last year, we were seven, now we're down to four. That was us right there, and just a really quick overview of what I'm gonna go over in this, in this presentation. This presentation is all about the CTC Technologies Report, Cost and Feasibility Report, that they, that we commissioned from them and that they delivered to us back in, I think it was the February timeframe. So this presentation is essentially presenting that report. And I'm gonna try to hit on all the, on the highlights of, in the report, and even then, the highlights that I understand, because it did get a little technical, the report, so I don't want to misrepresent my knowledge of some of the technical stuff and stick to stuff that I know. All right, so, jumping in, page four. Quick timeline, last summer, the, the town of Milton issued the RFP for a report detailing the design and cost estimate to replace the town INET. That is the scope of this report, with a fiber optic network. In October, CTC Technologies, a telecommunications consulting firm, won the bid, and in January, they delivered this report. After reviewing the CTC report, all four members of the committee thought it was a great report. They met all the expectations, I'm sorry, requirements as described in the RFP. I also want to add, and that's the verbiage down below, that the report that they delivered is very richly detailed and covers a wide scope. It covers a lot of design issue, design as a topic, what the, what the network would look like. It gets, it gets down into the details of what kind of electronics we would need on that network, anything to do with the, there's a quite a comprehensive, not quite a project plan, but a project list of what the construction would look like, a very long exhibit, detailed right down to the penny, which we're gonna get to in a second. So this report, I actually, I believe that this report would be the foundation for any, any future project plan, were we to pursue municipal broadband. So I'll just sum up by saying, I think, I think it's a very thorough and, and rich report. Okay, so their methodology, they have a team of experts, design and construction experts, as well as financial experts who weighed in on the report. And their interactions with the town personnel included a couple in-person meetings, phone conferences, and questionnaires. They also got materials from Jim Scroy and others in, in town that they then used to base, especially on the network design, estimates that they came up with. So they gathered a lot of information from the town, which I won't go into detail on, on all the stuff that they gathered to help them write their report. Now, page seven, now I'm gonna just tell you what they put in the report. These are the kind of the big, the big topics that they covered. The first big topic was the cost estimate. They gave us a range of cost estimates, a high, a high range, sorry, a high estimate and a low estimate. The high and the low estimates are predicated on, on how large the network is essentially, and whether we build in redundancy. They gave us an engineering assessment of the current network, recommended technical solutions, including the high-level network design of a, of a future network. And then I would say about half the report is financial modeling, where they both, on the construction of the projects, so the actual building of this network, including pole attachment fees, material, cost of materials, cost of electronics, very detailed analysis on that aspect, that financial aspect, and then also of financing and what a future municipal broadband entity might look like with cash flow statements and P&Ls and that sort of, those other sorts of financial and accounting exhibits.
You mean as an agency of this, of town government?
Yeah.
Department of Town Government.
Yes, yeah, they, they took that, they took that as a framework in order to just give us these exhibits, these financial exhibits. So, let's just jump in, I'm gonna cover the two, the three or four major topics that they covered. I'm gonna, before I get to cost, I just want to get into what the network design, what they suggested. And, yep, we're on page eight. So the network design that they suggested, but we put in the RFP, they didn't suggest it, we put in the RFP, is to provide fiber connectivity to 19 town school and other community anchor institutions. They, they designed, the initial design, so that it, to give us minimized construction costs and to give us redundancy and resiliency. And they also gave an, an alternative network design that, and this is the second bullet put up there, that passed by additional institutions in town, so institutions meaning like the hospital, Curry College, et cetera. And the other assumption that they put into their network design was to build in adequate capacity to normally meet today and tomorrow's data needs.
Because if you build it and it's no good next year, you kind of wasted your time.
Exactly, exactly. And, and that's the cool thing about fiber, is that when you, the term is overbuild, you put in more fibers. The cabling they were talking about in this report was a 288-strand cable, that was the assumption. We wouldn't be using 288 strands, basically 286 or something would be what they call dark fiber, but ready to use. And to Mr. Wells's point, when you want to increase capacity and other sorts of network operating practices, once you have the fiber up, it's really just a matter of connecting, of changing out the electronics or adding electronics, you know, at new sites or upgrading them. And the fiber will stay there for as long as they stay up on the place.
Could we rent any of the excess dark fiber to use that to offset the cost of the town?
Yes, we could, and I'll get to that in a second, but just, I should, this is a good point, a good place to say that all of the financial assumptions that they gave us and the models that they gave us did not assume any future revenue, just to be prudent. But yes, leasing of dark fiber is a, is, is something that network owners do all the time. All right, page 10. Oh, there's the map, sorry. So I won't go into detail, it kind of speaks for itself, but you can see the loop, right, from all the Atherton Station, Fire Station, down in the left-hand corner, down to Mattapan Square, you know, out to East Milton, and then back. What I think is interesting is that most, a lot of that kind of tracks the current INET, because to connect the schools, the high school and the elementary schools, back to the central.
Office.
Office, which I believe is pierced.
No, well, they're mainstay, but the office is actually at the high school, but their backbone could be a pierce. I believe you're right.
Right, and I just exhausted my, my knowledge of, my, my knowledge.
I think you're right.
Of the network, but, but you can see there, I, I like this picture, because you see those two blue lines over on the left and the right? Those would be new, and that's the redundancy part, where redundant basically means if something breaks.
Right.
You can just send it in the other direction. So that's what we mean by redundancy, when, if it comes up again in this report. All right, so, here's the cost. We have a baseline, we have a bunch of, we have a couple different options there that they put in there. And from a low end, $635,000 of construction, this is basically the construction cost, is a low-end estimate, and the high end is $982,000. You can see down in the lower right-hand corner. If you turn the page to page 11, the difference between the two estimates are essentially, the low cost is, is tracking the existing fire alarm system, messenger wires, and thus you avoid a lot of make-ready work, and it does not include redundant routes. The high-cost estimate assumes all aerial construction will require make-ready work, and it does include redundant routes.
So what are we paying now, today? What does INET cost us today? Do you know what it costs us, as is?
As far as leasing from Comcast?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's gone into effect yet, but that was recently renegotiated by the town.
Do you know, Michael?
Yeah, we, the contract's not, not finalized yet, so.
This base, is it compared to these numbers? Is it, is it?
Well, this is, as I understand, a construction. This is operational.
Right.
So operation.
This number right here on this, this per-site cost is when you take all, when you take construction and operating and kind of amortize over 20 years and distill it down to this number, it comes, it's about $1,000 per site, per month.
Right.
Which does include the construction cost.
In the, when they talk to future use.
Yes.
As far as expansion of the backbone, how long do you think he was? As far as expansion of the backbone, how long do you think he was giving you as like a useful life on the system as it is?
Their assumption is 30 years.
That's, okay, that's pretty good, because 30 years from now, who knows what it'll be anyway in 30 years, just...
And they're depreciating over 20 years and financing
Right. The, the other assumption is a 20-year payback on the bond.
Right.
Excuse me, on the bond for a 30-year asset.
But there are some issues with the low-cost estimate, I think, because they're not sure the fire alarm call boxes are, it's all workable, is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
So, I'll sing the praises of the report again, with its, with its context and detail, there's actually a section in the report that goes into, into detail about pole attachments and the, and the state of the utility poles
Yeah.
in town. They do, this is the wonders of modern technology, they do Google Earth, which is right down the street view, and so they actually look at pictures of, of every, not, not every single pole, but, you know, poles that, along the proposed route. And generally speaking, they're saying that the, the condition of the poles in town are not bad.
Yeah.
They've seen a lot worse. Was there, they didn't say we've seen a lot worse in the report, but that was kind of intimated. And the, the, there was a question before this report that we asked them to look at, which is having to do with the, the fire alarm system, which we do have, strung up on, on these poles. And once they've done, once they did their analysis, they came to the conclusion that, that, that that's not any, that's not a great advantage to the construction. It's not a disadvantage, but they said, well...
It's not a huge advantage.
It's not a huge advantage, we thought it would be.
There's no wow factor, like, wow, they have this, this is going to...
Right. Well, the, they were, they were amazed that we had a working fire alarm system, because that is kind of unique.
Right.
But beyond that, no, we'd still have to, and I'll talk about pole attachments, it's, it's actually the last page of this, but they, they did spend some time talking about pole attachments in the report.
Does your committee have a recommendation on the low cost or the high cost, which one?
No.
Okay.
We don't.
Do you think you will?
I mean, sure, I'll bring that back to the committee, and, and we'll, we'll talk about it. You know, I would say there are, just off the top of my head, a couple of variables that we'd want to know, just we as a town would want to know. One is cost savings, we, this report does not, it wasn't the purview of this report to dive into our current budget to see where we might save money, both on day one and avoided costs
Right.
into the future. I think that'll have a, I think that'll have a dramatic impact on, well, maybe dramatic's a dramatic word, but I think that'll, I think that's a very important piece of information.
There's, there's huge benefits in having your own backbone, esp- especially backbone that you can build upon.
Yes.
And there's almost every system, I mean, my, things that I've worked on were mostly the public safety, but the same, using the same type practice here. Redundancy is huge.
Right.
Having the ability, you know, if you, if you break one leg, to find its way around, because everything, I mean, just if we took our own personal cell phones off and it goes away for a day, I mean, you could, so imagine just on the maintenance of government here every single day, it's critical.
Right.
I like that on both of those. I like the idea of having redundancy, and I like the idea of having room to grow going into the future, because
Right.
it's not going to get any smaller, it's definitely going to get bigger.
Right, and, and that's the, just two, two points on, on your point. One is the, the idea of data demand, like the, it's just going to keep growing.
Right.
And, like, the variety of services that can be now done digitally is just every day, you know, just, just exploding. And the, the other part is control. And I, and I have a slide in here that kind of touches on a couple of the benefits of INET, of owning your own network.
Yeah, Joe, if you could just move along with some of the slides?
Yep, yes, yes. So this is just a little breakdown of, of the annual costs, sorry, the monthly costs when you add up $1,000 a month. I'm sorry, $1,000 per site, per month is $228,000 annually, I put in monthly cost there by mistake. That's just a note down below saying that this, that includes financing and operational costs. I did want to say, because I had to ferret this out going through other exhibits, they're assuming that we're basically be adding about $109,000 per month of, to operate this, in addition to what the, the town, the town's current operations. And just to put that in context, the assumption is that, that this network could be run with our current personnel.
Right.
So we're not adding, you know, personnel. There is a suggestion of adding a .5 FTE, but other than that, the, the $109,000 per month is, is an average of, of, of being, of added costs to the budget, and I want to also say that that does not include potential savings.
So, so Joe, just to make clear, you haven't done a cost analysis on this, and that might be the next step, if we want you to try to do a cost analysis to see what shakes out?
For, yes, I think that's a, that's a prudent thing to do. Okay, so, so that's the costs. I'm just kind of, I'm going to just kind of flip through this really quick, there's the .5 FTE I, I, I mentioned a second ago, and if you go to the next slide, Jen, page 15, I just threw that in there to, to show you the level of detail that is in the report. This is just one exhibit on the financing, this is what we're looking at here, our operating and maintenance expenses modeled out. The, the modeling, by the way, that they gave us are all Excel-based, so we can use these things for our own scenario testing if we so choose. All right, so moving now to the construction cost components. Also, I, I put this in, in the next page, just to show, just to give you a flavor of the detail in this report. On the left-hand column of that table, you see cost components, one, two, three, four, five, six of them. Each cost component is its own little world in the report. So you can, you can dig into the exhibits that they gave you, like, just say that engineering exhibit, and get it right down to the, to what streets and what square, not square footage, line footage per street that, for, for costing this out, down to that granularity. And this is not my expertise by any way, shape or form, I can just show you those numbers, but, all right, so this is what Mr. Wells was talking about a minute ago, some INET benefits. Scalability is, is, is huge, that's where if we overbuild now, if we put in 288 strands or some number of strands, this is what we mean by scalability, we, we grow into it over the next 30, probably 30-plus years. The, the thing that they pointed out is that it's, when it comes to adding facilities to the network, and a facility could be as small as a camera, anything that you're attaching to this thing, when you own your own network, you're basically just paying for the thing itself, and then you attach it, as opposed to if we're renting, you know, for, from a commercial provider.
Verizon lines, T1 lines, the costs are like through the roof.
It gets more expensive. So, so scalability, that's part of that, longevity, that's the, what they say, future-proof. And I just want to point this out, because we're going to visit it, it's going to come up again in another minute. If you see that second bullet point, if you go back, Jen, sorry, yes, so that second bullet point, you see that increasing a site's connection speed from 1 gigabit per second to 10 gigabits per second, as an example, does not increase the town's costs at all when you own your own network. And I just want to keep that in mind for a future slide. New INET disadvantages, initial capital cost, I think is the biggest one, finding the money for construction, and to the, to the extent that we do have extra costs, ongoing costs, those are definitely disadvantages. And then deployment time, you know, this thing has to be built, and, which is not 100% under control with the vagaries of the construction market. This slide just touches upon INET opportunities, again, something that Mr. Wells was mentioning a couple minutes ago. That first thing, that first bullet point there is about dark fiber leasing. Again, not, probably not a good idea to, to assume we're going to get this revenue from commercial enterprise customers, but it's definitely in the mix if, if this network And if you assume that the data, demand for data is just going to keep growing and growing and growing, you know, what might not be, you know, there might be opportunities down the road that we just can't see right now. And then the other part, and we talked, talked about this a little bit too, the future opportunities down below, a robust, reliable and secure fiber network offers the capability to support many technologies like smart cities applications, is one thing that they mentioned here. And I just want to throw in, their smart cities, they use smart cities technology is kind of an over, overarching term, smart cities applications, but for things like traffic mitigation. Again, this is kind of network, network management theory, which I'm not going to touch, but it's enabled by, you know, systems like this. Also DPW, various monitoring initiatives, monitoring sewers, monitoring water, monitoring, you know, anywhere where you want to stick a monitor, it's just...
Right. You have the backbone to do so.
Put a strand out to it, and, so you could really kind of wire up the town in that Leased service benefits, that just means if we, if we continue with a commercial vendor, today's Comcast, there is other fiber in town, you can just see it up on the, up on the poles. I don't know if anyone, I don't know if the Horizons of the world are offering these services, but they're out there. So there are some benefits. The, the biggest one is you're not spending a lot of money to build something, right? And the, the other thing is, is availability, you know, if, if they're in town, you assume it's just basically plugging in. CTC went out of their way to say that even though there are some advantages, it's their belief, and, and some, a belief that I share, that whatever advantages that might have are outweighed by long-term advantages to the town. If we're thinking about this as an investment in our infrastructure, that is going to last for a couple generations. Leased services disadvantages, and we touched upon this a minute ago, each additional site needing connectivity will be an initial recurring charges to the telecom budget. Every time you move, they're going to charge you, sort of thing, and that's just for the adding facilities to the network. I asked a couple minutes ago to remember the increase from 1 gigabit per second to 10 gigabit per second is costless, if you own the network, you ask that of a Verizon
You pay.
or a commercial, you're paying.
You pay.
And then they throw in uncertain pricing, you know, all, all these things, you know, we're customers of a, of a, of a big commercial vendor, you know, subject to the vagaries of, of pricing and, and all the sorts of things that we see in our own lives dealing with the telecoms. All right, so I'm just going to end on, on this, this was a very, very big part of the report, pole attachments. Milton does not have its own municipal light plant, so we do not own any of our poles. A project like this is much easier for the Conkers and the Braintree's of the world, as a matter of fact, they did all this stuff back in the 70s and 80s when cable TV came around. So the idea of pole attachments, where are we, where would we actually put our network was a very big question for us. And for my money, the, the, the biggest pleasant surprise out of this report was that they didn't think that that was such a big obstacle. They said that these pole attachments have, they're a matter of course, third-party attachers, that's what we would be if we wanted to attach to our Verizon pole, it's just business as usual with, with, with the Horizons of the world. And the overall pole attachment lease in the high-cost estimate came out to about $5,200 bucks a month, uh, uh, a year. That was a big blind spot to us on, on the committee, we just weren't sure what to expect from that. CTC spent, put a, a nice chapter, a nice section in the, in the report talking about this. And they also gave us a schedule, the town of Leverett, which is analogous to us in that they don't have a municipal light plant, built their own municipal fiber system, attached to all the Verizon poles out there in their town. And they were nice enough, the town of Leverett was nice enough to share that agreement with us, it's an attachment in the report, and the last page, page 24...
Joe, can I interrupt you? Where's Leverett?
Leverett is right next to Amherst Mass.
Which is in Western Mass, okay. How big of a town is it?
Demographically, it's night and day between Milton and us. I am guessing they have a population of like 2,000? I mean, it's small, it's small out there. So the attachment fees that they negotiated with their pole owners are on this exhibit right here, so...
So it's not so much the size, it's the fee, being able to negotiate the same, similar terms fees, right?
Yeah, and, and, you know, they, they go into more detail in the report, but they say this is, it's, it's, it's not quite like a menu pricing, but it's pretty, pretty consistent. You know, the thinking that if, if we went ahead with this, this project, we would see similar prices for attaching.
We just have more poles.
We just have more poles, yes. They also, by the way, they did talk a little bit, I didn't put it in the, in the report, in the presentation here, they did talk a little bit about putting our network underground. There, I, I guess, and I'm a thin ice here as far as expertise, but there are new tunneling technologies, like they can kind of bore tunnels under the roads, a little bit cheaper than digging up a trench, that sort of thing. They did mention that, they touched upon it. The current estimate that we're looking at here does not include that, it's all, all aerial. So that's the presentation, as far as next steps go.
That's great.
We talked about, I think the biggest one was the cost analysis. And then, and I don't know what the, the right order of operations here, but, but perhaps also talking to other committees in town that this overlaps with, and just as a, just as a, as a, for example, I've been talking with, or not talking with, tracking what's going on with the Fire Station Committee, you know, there are lots of other committees in town where there's an overlap here, or, or at least a mutual interest.
Okay.
So that's it, thank you very much.
That's great, that's, thank you for a very comprehensive presentation and certainly report. Any questions or comments from the members of the board? Melinda?
Just one, if you're, if you are going to be looking at the operating costs?
Yes.
I don't know if it makes sense to also think about looking at the formulation of our IT department, and they mentioned we'd need GIS support, we have Alan Bishop who does GIS, so, so maybe just some considerations about creatively controlling costs?
Oh, for sure, yeah. And the models that they gave us are, I mean, they're robust and they're, and they, and they are accurate as far as the assumptions that went into it, but they're also, they're also straw man, so we can
Think about this.
we can fool around, do scenario testing, that sort of thing, so, for sure.
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Dennehy could help you think through some of those things too.
Yeah, and, and I, the committees, the broadband committee's happy to help in any way we can.
Any other questions, comments? Seems to me that, that the committee should make a recommendation or recommendations to this board
Yeah.
as to how to move forward, and it would also help if there are recommendations on implementation, and I think that would include an analysis of costs and, and perhaps how we could get there
Mm-hmm.
in terms of costs, I think that would be helpful. I think that would be helpful to the board, unless there's any disagreement. If your committee could, could take that, take what you have now and what you've developed and take that next step, I think that would be very helpful.
Would that include looking at the option of leasing even though it has definite drawbacks? We don't even know that actually we could do that.
Oh, the leasing from a commercial provider, right. So we have a, we have a, what I've just presented was a build-your-own option. Right, there are, there are other options out there. But you're right, I mean, right now, we haven't dug into that.
I'd be happy to hear that, though, I think that's a good recommendation to come back with, as the chair says, to come back with. Like, I think your recommendations would help. I mean, for me, I understand this, so I have a good grasp of it. I don't think most people understand what we pay now on lease payments and T1 lines and, and all the costs that we're paying because we don't own anything. Other than the fire alarm system, but everything else we're paying rent along.
Right.
And pretty much at full capacity on, I mean, there's some fiber left, but not a lot, not 30 years' worth. I don't think there's five years' worth of fiber.
Oh, currently?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a, our current, it's old technology, 1997.
Absolutely, yeah.
So Joe, we're now in, just about in June, do you think you could come back with some recommendations and an implementation, you know, maybe by August or September?
I think so, sure.
So let's try to, let's try to plan maybe three months out for you to come back with a, some recommend, for your committee to come back with recommendations on implementation.
Will do.
Very good.
Thank you, Joe.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the committee's work.
Thank you.
All right, item seven, quarterly report from our, on inspectional services with our building commissioner, Mr. Prondak.
Evening.
Good evening.
So I have a head out, I don't have a PowerPoint before, I have a head out of current project numbers. And then I'll just touch on some of the highlights of the. I think it's probably best to start with those numbers. So in this current fiscal year, to date, we've.
Just the same one?
Yeah.
So as of, as of today, we've taken in $969,650 compared to last year, which is on the next sheet. Last year, we took in a substantial amount more, a million two by the end of the year. We have one month to go in this year. But last year's number reflected a spike due to, primarily due to the project at Curry College where they built an addition to their science center and that spiked last year's numbers by about $220,000 in total. So this really does mean that we're up, in general, we're up about 13% or 14% this year over last year, if you take away the spike. So in, and if you look at the third sheet, that's the, not last fiscal year, but two fiscal years ago, where we're probably going to meet or exceed that number, so. Bottom line is the, the construction is still, I guess, robust. It's, and somewhat mind-boggling that it just, it continues. I can say that the, the average amount of inspections we do in a year is up around 4,000, 4,200, and that's up from several years ago when it averaged at about 3,500 a year, so that's, you know, basically our one and a half building inspectors, a plumbing inspector, and a wiring inspector. So that's a fair amount of, fair amount of work going on. As far as some of the highlights of what's happened this year, as most of you know, the Woodmere project has pretty much wrapped up, all of those units are, have been issued occupancy permits. The Pulte project, seven homes have been permitted, three of those have been issued occupancy permits, and we have two permits pending on that. The Pest House has been moved, I just heard that today, it has been moved, I'm going up to check that out tomorrow.
It's on a rail foundation, huh?
Yeah, yep. And they still have to be near that with stone, and there's a few conditions that go along with that. Curry has, so the Curry project of last year was basically two phases, one phase was to put the addition on the science building and the other was to renovate it, renovate the existing one. So they finished the addition, they're occupying that, they're now in the process of renovating the existing building. And the Wentworth project, the first building permit has been applied for, but has not been issued yet, so they're working out some, some of the legal requirements of that, of that permit and waiting on some further information. They did build the bridge into the, into the project, and that's complete. And that's what comes to mind at the moment, so a quick summary of where we're at, snapshot.
Thank you, Joe, that's great. Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Farrington?
Joe, could you give us an update, please, on Thayer Nursery?
On Thayer Nursery? Well, so we've done some inspections on Thayer Nursery and we find that they are in reasonable compliance with the special permit. And they, I think, are heading to the planning board on June 12th for, the special permit was issued for three, for a period of three. It's my opinion that they, that the three years starts to toll on the day, the day they were first issued an occupancy permit, which would, which was only about a year and a half ago. But they're erring on the side of caution and they're, they're looking at the three-year period from when the planning board first issued the special permit, so they're, they're going now for that first three-year renewal.
Okay, and that's June 12th?
June 12th, yeah. So, so we've had no operational complaints to speak of over the last year or so. We do have questions about the, there's a big, drainage is a big concern for some of the butters and we've inspected that system, find it to be as designed and working well. And they also have some engineers coming out and looking at to affirm that for us. So I think overall, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Ms. Collins?
Oh, no.
No, you're all set?
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Collins?
I have a question. Joe, I guess it might just be food for thought, or maybe you could try to see if there's some way we might be able to address a concern that I've heard about from a few people recently, which is, these numbers are testament to the fact that your office is busy and you're generating a lot of revenue, generating a lot of business, and I'm sure all of your staff is, is very overworked, but. From what I've heard from a few people, trying, there's a lot of people who are trying to put on additions or do other work at their homes that require permitting. And in some cases, they have to go to the Board of Appeals, because they get a rejection from your office, then they have to go to a board, the Board of Appeals. So one of the questions was that I heard recently was, if there's something that is very obvious that it's not, it's not a judgment call, it's something that needs to be rejected, it's a violation of zoning, has, they have to seek a variance. Is there a way to kind of get those applications that are easy to identify as needing a variance kicked out of the system quickly, so they get a rejection letter, say on day four, rather than day 30? And that gets them into the Board of Appeals a little bit quicker, there's a backlog, yeah, the Board of Appeals is very busy, but is there a way we can try to move some of these applications? And I know, which only within the last few years, we've gone to a lot of this electronic filing in your office, but is there a way we can try to expedite the process for someone who clearly is going to need a variance? And, and maybe help that person get a project on a season sooner, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at that. Some of the, some of the, part of the problem with that, though, is that when you, when you look at a project and you see, okay, obviously there is this violation here, but then when you get the detailed plans and you sit down with the detailed plans, you then discover that, okay, well, it actually violates this section, this section, and this section of the ordinance, or the bylaw, I'm sorry. And what we don't want to have happen is to have someone get a variance for one part of the bylaw, and then when they come to get their full building permit, we say, well, wait a minute, oh, we missed these three. So there is that complication. And, you know, we, we try to, we try to do it all fairly and uniformly for everybody so that everybody's going through the same process. I mean, we can certainly look at it. And, and, yeah, we could try it.
If it's possible, I just bring it up because I've heard from some residents that, that they'd like to be able to move on projects more quickly, and if there's any way that we can expedite getting them into the Board of Appeals, that, rather than, say, waiting a third-day period and then just waiting another period of time, just so, I bring it up as something to maybe think about as a way to possibly address, and maybe there isn't anything that can be done.
Always thinking about how to move these things along faster, because it doesn't do us any good to hold on to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Joe, I just have one, and that is the number, the 969-650 number, which is the current year-to-date, do you know how that compares to the budgeted number? Is that, are we going to hit our budgeted revenue, do you know? Or, you may not know that off the top of your head.
It was budgeted at about 1.1, so we're on, we're on par.
On track.
To hit that number.
Okay.
It's anticipated, 1.1 is anticipated, right?
Yeah, that's what we budgeted in F118.
Right, okay. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Item eight, the Housing Subcommittee Conference, and I believe Ms. Collins is going to lead this.
I guess. I believe everyone got a copy of Karen Senterberg's proposal to us?
Yes.
Oh, good. So Ms. Senterberg first worked with the Fair Housing Committee and then also provided an update of the Housing Production Plan previously. And currently, the, the production plan hasn't been forwarded, many of the strategies haven't been forwarded, and it's set to expire in September 2019. There's no penalty for an expiration because it hasn't been certified. But the Housing Subcommittee is eager to create a truly meaningful plan for the town that addresses needs identified through the Master Plan Process, the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel Report, and it's been confirmed anecdotally that we have housing needs, I think we've all heard that talked about by residents. Another interesting point is that we can't use our federal home consortium funds because we don't have starter homes. A starter home is defined federally as having a value of $300,000 or lower. So we've actually asked to be pulled off the list because we were getting so many calls and don't have any stock to fulfill the requests. The Milton Residence Funds also confirm the need for housing and housing-related services as do calls to planning and community development and the Housing Authority. Also, if you look at the number of jobs in Massachusetts that have been created, it's in the 300,000 range, and housing stock is in about, the same period, I think, since, between 2010 and 2016, is 81,000 units, so there's quite a disparity. So as part of the process, the Housing Subcommittee seeks to maintain a coordinated vision with the Select Board and the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the various other initiatives through Planning Board activities and our Planning and Community Development Department. Part of this also involves consultation with residents, which is part of Karen Senterberg's proposal, as well as updating important demographics and analyses. The Subcommittee notes that it may wish to discuss some concerns or cites more in-depth than this update proposal, which totals $7,500, would allow. And it would be helpful to know if the Select Board would be open to renegotiating the scope in the future if the Housing Committee decides that it would be useful to have some additional work done. But at the moment, we seek a vote to, to accept the proposal for the Housing Production Plan in the amount of $7,500 and also request a year-end transfer.
Our reserve fund transfer, that's how we're going to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
From the Select Board.
Or is it a year-end transfer, not in a reserve?
Oh, yeah, a year-end transfer.
Right, right. For the Select Board, which in our own, right.
All right, questions, comments?
The only comment I have is Karen Senterberg did a very good job for the town, I thought, five years ago, drafting the original Housing Production Plan, and I'm the implementation committee's representative on the Housing Committee, so I support the board retaining Karen Senterberg to, to draft a new plan for us and update the plan at the cost of $7,500.
I assume we have the money in the budget?
We do, I talked to the town accountant today.
I'll make a motion if everyone's ready.
Yes.
There's a motion there, you want, you want this, I'll make this?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to update the Milton Housing Production Plan from Karen Senterberg Consulting. And do I need to say the amount of $7,500?
Yes.
In the amount of $7,500.
As a year-end transfer.
As a year-end transfer.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in second, and any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item nine, the East Milton ULI Technical Assistance Panel Report. And I see Bill Clark here, and is this why, is this the reason that Ms. Taguas is here as well?
Mr. Clark invited me to join him.
We're happy to have you.
Is he paying? Is he paying?
Good evening.
I'm glad to see that you support the funds for the updates to the Housing Production Plan. Chris Dealer is the Planning Board Representative on the Housing Committee.
That's great, that's great.
We need some housing to put these people in.
Yes.
Not sure where.
Mr. Clark, the floor is yours.
Okay. Back in January, the Planning Board had a Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Program done for East Milton Square. It's a Technical Assistance Panel put together a report, the report came out about two, three weeks ago. We corrected the draft, we have it out, it is on the town's website, and I know that the Planning Board has talked about it initially, I know there'll be more discussion about it, I know there'll be much more in-depth. The idea here is to get it into the neighborhood and have a discussion with the neighborhood. The ultimate goals and here is a shared vision, to create a shared vision, I mean, it goes in and it talks about problems that are then now. It states, change is inevitable, we're looking to try to create a more vibrant business district, how do you do that? Increase the density, increase the heights, allows mixed use in certain areas, potentially expand the commercial district, and all of these are topics of discussion. When I started 12 years ago, some of these same things were topics of discussion that just have a hard time getting traction to move forward. What this does is kind of, actually comes out and says that you need to have that shared vision. What are the assets, what are the opportunities? It actually states what they are, it states, you know, the inadequacy of our zoning, it states the outdatedness of some of our buildings in that area. In order to put money into rehabbing a building, there needs to be zoning in place that allows In order to put money into rehabbing a building, there needs to be zoning in place that allows for that money to make sense to invest in the building. Right now, we have a building before us in East Milton Square that's going for site plan approval. It came on the 29th of May. It'll go again on the 12th of June. Falcone is taking the Atlantic Financial Building, redoing the building itself. Presently, they can use the first floor, they can use a part of the second floor. They can't use the entirety of the second floor because they can't get the public to that following ADA compliance. The plan now is to put an elevator into the building, which will allow the entire building to be able to be used. A new part to that is that they're going to put a third story on without increasing the footprint enough that it touches any of the parking requirements. The building will be, the third floor is set back, so you probably won't even notice it from Adams Street. You may see it if you're stopped at the light at Granite Ave, going north on Granite Ave, you'll see the third floor. The rest of the time, you probably won't even see it. It's only 1,050 square feet in the back of the building. They are putting in an elevator. They're making the buildings, the front of the building ADA compliant. They're putting in new doors and windows so that it's an upgrade. They're putting new siding on the building, so it's an update to the building that it hasn't had in 40 or 50 years.
It's strictly commercial, or is the third floor going to be residential, or is it?
No, it's part of the, it's going to be commercial because that building, that building is only allowed to be commercial. It's in the business district. We don't have, we don't have the ability without going to the Zoning Board of Appeals for mixed use in the square at this time.
This takes this building out of, this building was originally in his, the plan that he brought forward to us last year. That, didn't it include that building?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
So he's going to come at it.
Differently, whatever he does do.
Yep.
Okay.
So, excuse me. You'll remember that part of the reason the Planning Board applied to the ULI for this Technical Assistance Panel is because residents in East Milton Square asked us to get involved to be more proactive in our planning in East Milton Square. So this was the first initiative that the Planning Board suggested to take advantage of a grant opportunity that comes through the ULI. So the, I think there's some good analysis in the ULI report. The Planning Board thinks so, too. One of the things that we really felt important and we asked for in the application to the ULI was to help us design a public engagement process because that's really the first step is to build consensus in the neighborhood, in the community, and really townwide in what's the vision for the town for East Milton Square. As Bill said, it's outdated zoning, it's outdated commercial building stock. You are limited in what you can do with those properties now. There's challenges with traffic and parking, as we know, and part of that has already been looked at. The Master Plan Implementation Committee funded some studies related to the Falcone traffic analysis and taking a look at that. The committee also recommended funding for townwide traffic studies to, in part, to do a model of East Milton Square to look at how we look at zoning, we look at traffic at the same time, because any time Planning Board looks at zoning or the town looks at zoning, one of the first questions that we get is, well, what about traffic and what about parking? One of the other things that is important is to think about what this might be able to do to help address some of our housing goals in town. So with an overlay, you can provide a different kind of housing than the majority single-family residential that the town has now. And I've heard from our new member, Kathleen O'Donnell, that there are a number of people who have approached her who said they'd be looking forward to moving into a development that allowed them to shed the responsibility of a single-family home and live in a multifamily building. So we know there's demand, and we know there's interests, and we want to help work towards a shared vision. So the Planning Board has suggested that the Planning Board take the lead on this planning effort and like to seek the, your support of that as well. On page 18 of the report itself outlines some recommendations, including next steps. So the first one is to build a community consensus, and the second is to refine a vision for East Milton Square. Now, in building the consensus, they have several suggestions of the way to do that. One is adding staff, which Planning Board didn't think was something that we would support, or that there would be support for. A second is to have consultants do this work, and the third would be to have a Citizens' Advisory Council. The concern that our board had about the third is that it's very technical work, and it would be best guided by people who have the expertise and the understanding of what kind of questions to ask and how to design a process to bring people together and solicit their opinions, similarly to what was done during the Master Plan effort itself that was guided by an outside consultant. So we'd like to suggest that the approach be hire an outside consultant through the Planning Board and through the funds that were approved at town meeting for studies to engage in this next step. And then also, that, at the same time, this refining the vision, we start to look at the topics. They have recommendations. We think those would need to be flushed out. Things like increasing heightened density would be something that's going to require a lot of conversation, a lot of analysis. There might be other things that we think people could come to consensus on more quickly, such as allowing for multifamily within the district. Another topic that might take a lot of discussion is expanding the commercial district. I think one thing that a lot of people, and maybe even board members here, don't realize is there's a lot of commercial buildings that exist outside of the commercial district, and they exist by special permits or variances, and when they look to change, it's a complicated and cumbersome process. So that's one of the reasons why this suggestion of expanding the district, but also thinking about the buffer and boundary, the transition from the district into the single-family residential neighborhood behind. Included in that, I'm sure, is going to need to be some additional traffic and parking analysis. Some of that may come through that other funding that's been targeted or suggested for the, through the Master Plan Implementation Committee funds. So we'd like to at least move forward on those first steps, and then we're going to look at what comes out of that process before recommending what the follow-up steps that would be. So we look for any comments that you may have, or guidance, or suggestions, or if you don't agree with us on the next step.
Questions, comments?
I have a quick comment, and that was, I should have said what ULI even stands for. Urban Land Institute is made up of local leaders that identify challenges to better development, feature best practices from across the country, and diverse new solutions for land use patterns. The ULI people that came here, different professionals that are planners, designers, affordable housing experts, attorneys, traffic engineers, they give up a day of their normal work schedule to come here, sit here from 8:00 in the morning until after 8:00 at night, and they give back a product within a month or two, in our case, three, that comes out and actually states what our, what our issues are. So it's not just somebody saying, well, I think you have this problem. This is somebody who's, they've done a deep dive into this particular area to come up with these, with these comments. It adds some credence to the fact that you have issues, maybe this is a way that you can fix some of these issues.
Thank you, Bill. That's helpful. Any questions, comments from the members? Mr. Wells?
One question, just, and I know that, as we know, density has been a hot topic in East Milton. They recommend that density is a good thing. I mean, I know I see it in so many other places, and I've had so many residents ask me, as well as just as Catholic neighbors, a lot of people do want to live there, you know, they're, they're ready to give up the single-family home but want to stay in East Why is it, again, though, that they think density is a good thing? I'm just not sure how they, I can't remember exactly what the report said about it, although I know it did talk about increasing density.
Generally, the increase in density has to do with what it, the scale of project that it takes to warrant the investment, so, and then the other thing is about placemaking and walkability. I mean, there's a lot of already about East Milton that provides walkability. But generally, the, we're, if we look to do a 40-yard district, where we're looking at 20% to 25% affordability, in order to gain that level of affordability, you need enough density to make the, to allow the market rate to help support that level of affordability.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, comments? Mr. Farron?
Cheryl, is there anything in the report that the ULI recommended or advocated for that you disagree with?
We haven't discussed the merits of each of the recommendations. We've, to date, have discussed the process being the important next step and that the recommendations would need to be flushed out through that process. And we didn't want to weigh in on any of the recommendations until we went through that public process.
Let me rephrase the question.
Okay.
Or you think you might disagree with?
We haven't, we haven't taken a position yet. Honestly, we haven't gone through them point by point. We recognize that there will be things that will take some process to talk about, but there are merits to talking about them, and they may not go forward anywhere close to what's been recommended in this report.
Yeah, I mean, to be clear.
But we think it's a good starting point for discussion.
I'm not trying to ask like a "gotcha" question. I haven't read the report, so I was just looking like broad, you know, broad strokes. If something jumped out at you where, you know, we all live in this town, we all know what's practical, what's feasible, if something jumped off the page and said, geez, well, you know, that's not going to work, something like that. That's all.
Well, I know one of the things that I've suggested that people have said is not practical is to look at the way the highway ramp, off-ramp works, and how it's a, and the way you, traffic has to loop through, and I've been told that that's federal and that's state, and that's this and that. But that's really one of the things that will make a big impact in East Milton Square. And so if we don't put it on the table, we won't even talk about it, right? So similarly, heightened density is the same kind of question, because we know that developers come to us and say they need heightened density in order to make their projects work. So let's talk about what that means. Sometimes, actually, it's, it's not as negative as people initially think. One of the things that, you know, being in the design profession that I am, is I try to have people understand, you can look at something as a total box, a complete box, and it fills out the property, or you can look at something that has open space, that has courtyard, that articulates the heights. Some of it's more, the height's more towards the center or to the rear, some of it's closer to already higher buildings, and it steps down, and that can have a big impact. And so that height might be better than having something which is a monolithic height that fills out the whole block. So it's really something that needs to be looked at from an urban design point of view, and that's why I think heightened density needs to be on the table for discussion. Now, we haven't had that level of detailed discussion yet at our planning board meeting, so that's my personal opinion.
Ms. Collins?
I, for me, I think that the most important thing is to have that shared vision, and so I do like the idea of the building community consensus and visioning. I, I'm a big proponent of bang the table, as Mr. Dennis, he knows, I've been talking about the town trying to, to get the software and use it, and even though we might not do that, I still think that it would really, something like that would really help in a process like this, and who knows, if you put it in RFP, there are practitioners who use it. You can really direct people back to our official site and direct conversation, but you can also give people new ways to interact with the process and get people you would not otherwise get. And I was on a webinar today on using it around housing, but this goes for anything, any project you'd want to use, and any, any project could use this. It does not have to be a design or building project or anything like that. But they have ambassadors that are based on demographics that don't usually come out or are underrepresented, and people within those demographics have volunteered, and they spend a month in training, and they go around with their tablet and go into these communities and get them to participate, and it really creates a rich experience. It's inclusion that the town hasn't had before, and I really believe that those diverse voices are what make us stronger, so, so I support that. That's just my pitch.
She has a button on tonight, I just noticed.
I do think designing the process is something that we're very interested in, too, because having a public meeting such as this and having people come to a microphone is not comfortable for a lot of people who might have an interest in their neighborhood. They also might have a concern about expressing an opinion that's different than a lot of their neighbors and what that means if they do that in a public forum. So there are surveys, and there are other ways that I think we're going to, similarly to the Master Plan, there are certain demographics that are hard to reach. We're going to ask them to come forward with a plan to reach all demographics, and that's going to meet, I think, higher-tech technology, but even lower-tech technology about having, you know, some informal, sit-down kinds of engagement right in East Milton Square. Walking tours, because walking it, like I've done with different groups at different times, is, you know, you think you know your neighborhood, but until you really walk it and you see it from a lot of different perspectives and a lot of different times of day, you know, you don't see it the same way some people do. So we think, the Planning Board thinks that the process is really a critical first step, and we'd like to get started on it.
Ms. Collins?
So Cheryl, I think you had asked for support from this board, and I certainly support your efforts. We've, you know, we've been looking, as a town, for the past two years at a potential development in East Milton Square, and I think it's been valuable to go through this ULI process. There are a lot of experts, and they've given us some good material to work with. So I agree with the Planning Board's approach of looking at the first two recommendations, building the consensus, and trying to define the vision. I suspect that our board would be happy to support that in any way we can, and I guess I'd ask the chair, do we want to take a, you know, a motion to support it, the particular recommendations, or just a general consensus of the board?
Well, we can do that. I think Mr. Wells has a question or comment before we get to that.
I agree with Katie. The only thing is, I'd rather let them go first, let the Planning Board go first, and then maybe go, so that we're together.
Yeah, I think we're just, I think they're just asking us to support their efforts.
Yeah.
So that's all I was really going to make a motion for, which is to support the Planning Board moving forward with the first couple of recommendations based on the, on the TAP, and whatever we can do to help.
Excuse me, Katie, sorry for that. Just to back that up a little bit, because there had been a joint effort between our board and your board on when the Falcone development first came forward, and what we might do going forward, there was talk of a working group, and since this ULI report came out, and there's some recommendations in it, we just wanted to make sure that both boards, you know, could come to an agreement about the best way to go forward now, which, again, the Planning Board feels as if an outside consultant retained by the Planning Department, but the RFP and the scope and the process would be managed through the Planning Board, and then, of course, we'd have engagement with not only the public but with the Select Board, the Neighborhood Association, and any other board or committee that would want to have a role in it. But the leadership would come through the Planning Board and the Planning Department.
So it sounds, Katie, like that may be the motion to support the Planning Board on the next step, which is the hiring of a consultant by the Planning Department using funds that have already been allocated by town meeting for that purpose. Is that, is that, is that?
Right, because the funds were allocated for studies in the Planning Department's budget, so.
Yeah, so I think, if we want to make the motion, I think.
Okay, so are you looking for specific amounts, or support your specific amount?
No, we don't have an $50,000 budget for it, but, okay, so I'll move that we, that the Select Board supports the efforts of the Planning Board to commence the next steps recommended by the ULI in their TAP report to build community consensus and refine a vision for East Milton Square and to retain a consultant.
Second that.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
One question. So I'd like, just a, just a thought, and I've thought of this, you know, we've had so many meetings, and I'm not talking about a specific project, I'm talking about the recommendation. recommendations of this report. And there was a lot of benefit in what we took place in at Steel and Rye that night. You know, we've had meetings in halls and maybe, you know, there's a lot to be said about breaking bread with your neighbors. Maybe we have something like Navara and we just all go there and formally just introduce ourselves and like, to the point of Mrs. Collins's button, yimby, which is a term I never heard before, we all learn what nimby means very quickly, which is not my backyard, but to accomplish, yes, in my backyard, is really accomplished in baby steps, you know, person by person, conversation by conversation, effort by effort. Maybe we do, our first step out is like in a social, just they get to meet us, we get to meet them. To me, every time we've had anything like that, there's a benefit to it, people speak to us. And one of the good things too about the OI, they walked, and when there was, they walked that whole square. They got a lot of stories from us, yeah, they walked along. They, they took the walking tour. It's just a thought, just, I, I, and I thought about it only because I didn't know what to expect the night, and I, I can't remember what the name of the group was that sponsored the event at Steel and Rye.
At Steel and Rye.
Oh, the Smart Growth Alliance.
Yeah, the Smart Growth Alliance. And, and if they can do that, we could do that. And I just think that'd be a good way for us to start.
Yeah.
Were you looking at Bang the Table, the program Bang the Table?
Oh, yes, I've been looking at it for months.
I thought she was going to bang the table. I was like, awfully.
There's actually a program that we have been looking at. One of them is Bang the Table. There's several others. The, there's two problems with them. One of them is cost, the second one is the time commitment that if you get it, you spend that much money, you need to take and put time into it to answer all those questions. Because you're telling people, tell me what you think. And it's just like social media, they want instant gratification, they want you to answer that thing right away. So if you start it, you can't just start it, you have to.
Right, that's why retaining a consultant that uses that program for something specific-
To start it, yes. But in the end-
Well, they, they would just use it for a specific project and then you wouldn't own it. And it was just a suggestion because I understand what you're saying, you do have to have staff who know how to run it.
I know a lot of bigger, bigger developers in, whether they're doing Boston, Quincy, Worcester, in major cities, they have a program. They use that program because they are trying to sell their project. And they're telling all the good things about their project. We're looking at it for a little bit different reason. We're trying to get, should we, could we, how do we do this?
Right.
Do you want this in your yard?
Right. And that, that's, that's the, that's the benefit.
How do we get to, yes.
Well, that we're not here to debate the merits of bang the table, but that's exactly what that gives you and-
That type of program.
Yeah.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tony?
Yes, aye.
Yep, so unanimous. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 10, the conference with the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee is going to be deferred perhaps until the next meeting. Item 11, review and approval of minutes. I believe we have two sets of minutes, May 7th and May 17th. And are the members prepared, is anyone not prepared to vote on these minutes?
I'm good.
All right, so, do we have a motion on the minutes of May 7th, 2019?
I move to be approve the minutes of May 7th, 2019, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstentions? No? Okay, unanimous. Minutes from May 17th, 2019, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 17th, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe it's unanimous. Oops. No, sorry. So 401, abstention from Ms. Collins.
Oh, this is, yeah, I have the one that's, yeah, I listened to.
All right. And I believe that's all we have for minutes. We have a set of minutes for the Governor Stoughton, but I believe we should do that in the Governor Stoughton.
Okay.
As the Gov, as part of the Governor Stoughton meeting, and so we'll, we'll notice that for the next Governor Stoughton meeting. Moving on, the next item, item 12, the taxi license for Parkway Cab and Milton Cab Company.
Make a motion-
Just Parkway Cab.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of taxi cab licenses for 2019 for Frederick Rouse Parkway Cab, 66 Alpheus Road, Rosendale.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I believe it's unanimous, unanimous. Item 13, the extension of hours for Steel and Rye for June 14th, 2019. This is a request from Steel and Rye to extend their liquor license hour, which currently expires at 12:00 AM to 1:00 AM for the purposes of an event for a Milton High School reunion on June 14th, I guess it'd be June 13th, and on to June 14th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Milton Opus DBA, Steel and Rye, 95 Elliott Street, to extend the hours of operation, including serving alcohol from midnight to 1:00 AM on Friday, June 14th, 2019.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm going to vote for this tonight, but I don't want to see this become a pattern. We do this for New Year's Eve, but, you know, this is a residential neighborhood and I'm, you know, midnight to 1:00 AM, I'm not sure we want to start seeing a lot of our restaurants serving alcohol past midnight, at least I don't. So, oh, I'm willing to vote for it this time.
That reservation. Ms. Collins.
Yes, and I, I actually asked Christine Stanton about this and whether Chief King had signed off on it. And he said that he would alert the patrol that, that this may be approved and if it is, because I, I also have a little concern about making this a habit and, and what happens in an extra hour of drinking.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? I believe it's unanimous. Item 14, one-day liquor licenses.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for We Are Milton Annual Event held at Governor Hutchinson's Field, Adams Street, on Saturday, June 22nd, 2018, and Sunday, June 23rd, 2019. And a one-day liquor license for the Milton Club at 193 Central Avenue for Friday, May 31st, 2019, Saturday, June 8th, 2019, Sunday, June 9th, 2019, and Saturday, June 22nd, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Did I have a question?
Oh, Mr. Farrington.
Anyone know what the running tally is on the number of one days that we've issued to them?
Christine does. He is-
I believe it's 20, that will make 21.
With the ones that would be approved momentarily.
Correct.
It will be 21 total.
Yes, I believe it's 18, 19, 20, 21.
And Mr. Kelly has how many annually?
30.
30.
What is it? Sorry, 23.
Mr. Wells.
We had two with the previous.
I'm abstaining on the We Are Milton one because I sit on that committee.
Okay, so we should break up the motions then?
Yeah, so I was just going to ask if we could break up the motion into two votes.
Yep, let's do that. So, do you want to make a motion?
Read it again.
Yeah, do you want to make a motion just on the We Are Milton?
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for We Are Milton Annual Event held at Governor Hutchinson's Field, Adams Street, on Saturday, June 22nd, 2018, and Sunday, June 23rd, 2019.
Friendly amendment, 2019 for both dates, but I'll second the motion.
Yeah, thank you for catching that.
With the friendly amendment, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention.
I abstain.
401. And now the second, second vote.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Milton Club at 193 Central Avenue for Friday, May 31st, 2019, Saturday, June 8th, 2019, Sunday, June 9th, 2019, and Saturday, June 22nd, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I stand corrected, that'll be 24.
24 total.
24 of the 30.
Okay. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, item 15, the Race Amity Day Proclamation.
I'll make a motion to approve a proclamation for Race Amity Day on June 9th, 2019 for the town of Milton.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Item 16, the Eagle Scout Court of Honor Letters of Recognition.
I'm helping you out here tonight to approve the signing of Eagle Scout letters. I've been waiting, I've made many motions in the past here. Letters of recognition for the Court of Honor ceremony that will be convened at 3:00 PM on Sunday, June 9th, 2019, in St. Michael's Episcopal Church in Milton. The recipients earning the rank of eagle are Jackson Humphries and James DeSandro of Troop 3, Milton, Massachusetts.
Second.
Congratulations.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Well done.
Yeah, and I will say that the, the letters that we're going to be sending do point out the hard work and dedication and the achievements that have been, that have been, that have been made by these two worthy recipients, Jackson Humphries and James DeSandro. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Item 17, ratification of the Milton Foundation for Education, 2019 Teacher of the Year Award citations.
So I'll vote to ratify the Milton Foundation for Education's 2019 Teacher of the Year Award citations from the select board for Mary Beth Callahan, Takla Elementary School preschool program, Tara Kostak, Takla Elementary School kindergarten, Sarah Slater, Cunningham Elementary School kindergarten, Beth Fahy, Collycott Elementary School physical education, Melissa Craven, Collycott Elementary School, 5th grade, Carrie Devens, Pierce Middle School, 6th grade, social studies, Rebecca Damiani, Milton High School Music, and she did a great job, the kids did a great job this weekend, Liam Downs, Para of the Year, and Amy Gale, 1st grade, Collycott Elementary School.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Worthy recipients all. We weren't able to go last week because we had a meeting, but it is one of the best nights of the year for the Milton Public Schools. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Item 18, the Harbor Master issue is going to be deferred until the next meeting perhaps.
Yep.
Item 18, boards and committee-
19.
I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. I'm trying to rush through.
I'm trying to help you.
I appreciate that. Item 19, board and committee appointment, registrar of voters.
I move that we reappoint Francis Manning West, he was 17 in Manning Lane, to the Board of Registros through May 31st, 2020. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Do you want to change that to? Okay, you're right, yeah. That's a typo. You're right, you're right. Okay.
We got through, through May 31st, 2020.
20.
2020.
Katie's correct, yeah. 2020.
2020, okay.
Second, I don't know if anyone's seconded, I'll second.
With the amendment, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 20, the appointment of member, reappointment of members of the Conservation Commission.
This usually has been a three-year appointment in the past, I believe. So, it says 2019, I think it should be 2022.
2022?
Yeah. So I'll move the re- That's all right.
So these are correct, though, on the-
So I'll make-
Are they correct on the letters?
They're correct on the letters.
I'll make a motion to reappoint John Cannon of 170 Cabinet Street, Judith Darrell Kemp of 232 Highland Street, and Hans Van Lindgren of 2 Viala Street, number 2, to the Conservation Commission through May 31st, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And item 21, reappointment of members of the Cultural Council.
What's the term on those letters?
What is the term?
What's the term on that?
It's a term, you got the letter.
Well, the, the letter says 2022.
Okay, so it's three, that's three years as well. So I'll make a motion to reappoint Patricia Ostrom of 198 Randolph Ave and Doug Seibert of 30 Governors Road to the Cultural Council through May 31st, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, so we, oh, we have one more. Bicycle, reappointments to the Bicycle Advisory Committee, and these letters are through 2020, so these apparently are one-year appointments.
Okay. I move to reappoint Michael Blackwell of 357 Blue Hills Parkway, Lee Toma of 58 Aberdeen Road, Eric Ask of 10 Stoddard Lane, Joseph Sloan of 53 Concord Ave, and Vincent Urbansky of 22 Maryland Road to Bicycle Advisory Committee through May 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, oh, Katie?
No.
Oh, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. All right, we move now to item 23, the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Members of the board, Madam Vice Chair. Couple of things tonight, so we've been working through our solid waste disposal and hauling contracts. It's a very tough time in the industry. A lot of the municipalities are working through some of the same issues that we're seeing. Kathy Merza, who is our Mass Department of Environmental Protection, agency rep, has seen similar problems with contracts expiring at the end of fiscal year 19. So we are making headway both with the solid waste disposal facility that we currently use, as well as the recycling processing facility that we use. And contracts have been written for three-year extensions for each of those that Town Council is reviewing. I will say that we have seen roughly 15 to 16, 15 to 20 percent increases in the disposal of both. The hauling contract, what we did, what we had done, excuse me, we put out a contract similar to the way materials been collected for the last five years. We put out a two-day contract so that the town could continue to be collected on Wednesdays and Thursdays. We got one bidder, the current contractor, and there was a stipulation from them that if they didn't receive some work in Boston, whose contract is also expiring and out for bid, that they wouldn't be able to honor the two-day commitment. So we put out a subsequent contract to possibly go back to pre-2014 and collect the town in a five-day cycle. We did receive four bids, they were very competitive, and we're working through the negotiations on those. Those have also spiked at a significant amount, so we're still working through the process. We have two meetings tomorrow with the hauling, two of the hauling companies to work through some of the logistics and, and see if we can get to a, a better place. But it's, the long story short is we're going to see a significant increase in what it costs to both pick up and dispose of materials. One of the stranger things we're starting to see is that it's, costs roughly the same One of the stranger things we're starting to see is that it's, costs roughly the same amount of money to dispose of recycling materials as it does solid waste, which is a first, I think, in the industry. But again, Kathy Merza from Mass D E P is seeing this throughout the South Shore and her communities that she represents. But Solid Waste Advisory Committee has weighed in on a couple of items. So the gist of it is, we're still in negotiations with the hauler. We think we're at a good place contractually with a three-year extension for our disposal facilities, but there is the potential that the town would revert back to a five-day collection cycle come July 1st.
But that's not really changed. You think that's the only way to perhaps take some of the sting out of the price increases, to go from two days to five days?
The two, the two-day price was the best price we got. Unfortunately, they can't, there was only one bidder, and they can't honor that commitment if they don't, if they're, they're looking for a five-day work week, rough, you know. There's another company that's coming in that, that may be able to accommodate. They won a bid in one of the other surrounding communities of ours, and they may have some capacity with trucks, and they're willing to, to sit down and talk about it. But the best price we would have gotten from a hauling perspective was that two-day collection period, which I think everyone in the town really has gotten accustomed to, and it works well. Very rarely do we cancel. There's some holidays that we have to collect on one day or the other. But unfortunately, the circumstances in the industry have changed in the last five years dramatically, and we're still working through it. And it's going to be, you know, in the next week or two, we should have a much clearer vision. So we figured we'd renegotiate the disposal pieces now and extend them for three years, not necessarily five years, for two reasons, to get ourselves off of the Boston contract so that we're not going out to bid the same time Boston is. And hopefully, in three years' time, the industry will have kind of settled itself down a little bit.
This is more of a national issue as well, correct? This is all over country.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just, we're up for bid this year. You have communities like Quincy and Brantley that aren't, that will probably face the same situation that Boston and Milton and Randolph and other communities are facing right now. It's unfortunately just the cost of doing business in 2019, 2020.
Okay.
All right.
Mike, what's the increase percentage-wise as compared to what's been budgeted?
So they budgeted roughly 17%. The disposal came in roughly at that number, but the collection was, the two-day collection number was 60% higher. Six zero than we anticipated. So that cushion that they predicted, which, which was, you know, conservative, is completely eaten up by the collection bid. Quite honestly, there aren't too many hauling, hauling, municipal hauling companies in our area. So we're limited to a handful. Waste Management Republic, Sunrise Scavenger, who currently collects for us, and Capital Waste Services. So it's, it's a shrinking pool. The municipal collection product isn't very desirable.
So it's more than triple than what we budgeted for, is it?
Yes.
So, so this, this should be an item for the Finance Subcommittee to look at in the-
We do. We're going to schedule a Finance Committee meeting to have a discussion about it.
Again, the conversations, we have four or five conversations with my scavenger, and they're appealing a decision, and we're sitting down with them, but they should have a definitive answer for us, whether it's going to be a two-day collection week or a five-day collection week in the next week or so. So it's, it's going to be an 11-hour decision, what we do. Most of the members of the community are familiar with the five-day. It seems like a long, long time ago, but it, it, if you look at it purely from a numbers perspective, two of the collection days, if we should go that route, wouldn't change. So it would be 60% of the routes, people who are currently Wednesday or Thursday would move to Monday, Tuesday, or Friday. So it's not that overwhelming of a, of a process. And I've been through it before in Boston. It takes a month, about a month or two before people are reeducated. But again, we're not at that point yet, but it's just something that we, we had to entertain because of the limited competitive bids that we received.
Mr. Chair, could I add, Town Administrator's rate, this is a, as Richard, you said, a nationwide problem. I mean, I'm, as you know, I'm serving on the board of the Mass Municipal Association. This is, this and education reform are the two hottest topics. And one community west of the city at our last meeting said that they're, they don't want to do it, but their recycling costs are exceeding their regular trash collection costs, and they're thinking about getting rid of recycling because, because of the cost. They don't want to do it. They want, they want to recycle for environmental reasons, but, so it's really forcing a lot of hard choices in communities.
It's the complete opposite of what we started recycling from, whatever, 15 years ago. We weren't the first. I mean, we were, we were leaders in that aspect. When no one else was recycling, we were. But that stood, to Katie's remarks, that was one of the national stories, like down in Arkansas, as a waste management community, they're ready to like just go, make, go back to all, which is going back 20 years.
Yeah.
It's going backwards.
So regarding this, we're going to have to come up with a, a plan to deal with the financial change. And that's something we'll have to do in the next, the next few weeks, really.
Correct. Yep. Last Thursday, I jumped on a call, just talking about energy aggregation. I know that's a long, drawn-out process, but the next step in the process was for energy, Good Energy, who we signed in agreement with this board, to go and sit with Mass D O R. We jumped on a conference call with the Mass Department of, Department of Energy Resources. They go through our application and our agreement with Good Energy to make sure that all the boxes are checked and that the residents are getting exactly what the agreement talks about. Mass Department of Energy Resources is doing a lot of these. We got a verbal approval. I'll get a written approval from them that the energy agreement with Good Energy and the Town of Milton for energy aggregation is proceeding nicely, and then that letter will be submitted to the Department of Public Utilities, which is the next step. So there's a, there's a checks and balances here. So the Department of Public Utilities will take a look at the D O E R letter and then the agreement, and will probably do the same in, I believe it's 60 days. So that's starting to move its way through the process, and there's a lot of communities doing this. We were on the call with, with the Town of Leicester on the phone. They're also represented by Good Energy, but, and the next following day, they were doing three other communities. So it's, it's, a lot of communities are jumping on board, the energy aggregation. Couple, just for the, the members of East Milton that have been painfully working through season after season of construction and utility and banging and jackhammering, I'm sure some of this board received phone calls, received a bunch of phone calls Tuesday morning when the work started at 4:00 AM. The idea is to try to increase the productivity and limit the amount of time. The only other option was to go overnights and do this from 7:00 PM until morning. There are obviously, when you're working on a major thoroughfare like Adams Street and you're replacing gas mains that are 100 years old, it's, it's an arduous task, and there's no real easy way to do it. So I apologize to them. It's, it doesn't sound like it, but it's, it's the best time to do it. The traffic in East Milton really picks up in the afternoon around 2:00. This mitigates some of that work and increases their productivity. But I apologize to them. This is probably going on three years now between the water and, and gas work that's been going on. But this work is, is expected to continue Monday through Friday, 4:00 AM to, 4:00 AM to 12:00 PM until August 3rd. So I ask for their patience and apologize in advance.
They're every morning, all the equipment right in front of my house, so.
Yeah, Deputy, Deputy O'Neill, who has his, has his thumb on it. He, he reached out to some of the constituents, reached back to them and explained to them that a lot of the work you see now is jackhammer, which is extremely loud at that, any hour of the day. Never mind, you know, before the world wakes up. But this work is preliminary, and once they start identifying where the equipment is through this jackhammering process, that the heavy equipment will come in and they'll actually start replacing the infrastructure, which still has a noise to it, but it's a lot quieter than, than jackhammers, so.
For one solace, and this is, and I've said this before, if you just take five minutes ago and look at what they're pulling out of there, this is a solely needed project. The infrastructure, what we're using for gas and water was so outdated. I mean, this is going to be a big, it's painful now, but it's going to be a huge benefit to the community when it's done.
Thank you. Couple of notes. The teen center, the visionary session, the third session, is being held at, in the Blue Room at Town Hall this coming Saturday at 2:00 PM. They had one yesterday at the high school and last week at the middle school. This one is open to all residents of the town to come in and take a look at. It's a, it's a pretty neat workshop where they, they basically walk through what people want to see and don't want to see in the teen center. So that's going to be Saturday at 2:00 PM in the Blue Conference Room at Town Hall. The Summer Concert Series starts next Wednesday, week from tonight, on Town Hall on the gazebo.
Carver's Fancy.
Carver's Fancy, yep, sponsored by Representative Congressman Lynch and Congresswoman Presley. That's next Wednesday at 6:00. And tomorrow, here in the parking lot, DA Mike Morrissey sponsors his fourth annual shred day for Milton residents. It's a great way to get rid of any confidential or documents that you don't want lying around or being sifted through in your recycling barrel, so.
What time's that start?
10:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the parking lot here. Thank you to DA Morrissey and Marion Sullivan.
Great.
That's a wrap.
Thank you, Mike. The Chair's report, we're going to defer. There's no Chair's report tonight. That's item 24. Item 25, there are sub-communities that include on the agenda topics that the Chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed for items that come up after, after the agendas are posted. This is something I think we want to vet with Town Council, but it's, it is used in other communities to, to capture ministerial items that come up after the fact, and so we want to vet that with Town Council, so that's just a, that's a possibility if we get the okay on that. On the Members' Report, we have that on the agenda. What I'd like to do with, with the approval and the, the agreement of all the members is, if we have a Members' Report, if possible, I'd like to have a, a list of what the items would be that you want to report on. We don't want to get into a discussion that isn't on the agenda. What we're, what we could suggest is include item 29, which is Community Happenings. A lot of the times, a, a Members' Report really is community happening. So, so if the, if the Members agree, if we could include Members' Reports, if you let us know when we're preparing the agenda, if you have an item to, to report on, then we can put that in the Members' Report, and then we can, we can include Community Happenings as kind of a general item. Is that something that would be acceptable to the Members?
Fine. That's fine.
Okay. Now, just asked you tonight, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep the Members' Reports tonight if anyone, if anyone has anything. Ms. Collins? Ms. Collins, nothing. Mr. Farrington?
Nope.
Ms. Collins?
I don't.
Mr. Wells?
I do not.
All right.
Do you?
I do not. I do not. Citizens Speak Response. Anything? I'll just say that, that, that I appreciate the efforts of Senator Timbulte and his willingness to come in here and report on all of his, his efforts to, to seek funding to improve the community. I think, I think what he detailed tonight shows the work that he's doing and the work that he's doing on behalf of Milton, and, you know, it's surely appreciated by all of us.
I agree.
Item 28, Future Agenda Items. Anything?
I have two.
Ms. Collins?
Well, before we know it, we'll be looking at the deadline for the October Tom Meeting warrant, opening and closing, so I think we should start thinking about Tom Meeting articles, and the Finance Committee will probably want to talk again about the one that was sent back for further study in May. So Tom Meeting articles, not necessarily for the next meeting, but over the, over the summer. And the second one is, obviously, we had an election on April 30, and the town treasurer, whether it be appointed or elected, was on the ballot. Voters made a decision at this election. We know it took the town of Hangum three times in order to pass changing their treasurer from an elected to an appointed position. So I think at some point, we need to have a conversation about, do we want to go back out to the voters? What, you know, the Town Administrator's could have been holding an open position in the office, and, and we may want to have a conversation with the Town Administrator. He may want to have a conversation with us about where we go from here. And it may be helpful to invite the Town Government Study Committee to join us.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
Well, I, I should, sorry, I should have said, I, I don't have a future agenda item yet, but we may have one when we get to the Governor Stotan portion.
All right.
On the discussion, when do we schedule another meeting with them on, with Fallon to try and get this inked in? Because I think if we can get this to, something to this board to go, to have ready when the fire station buildings do come to reality, I think that'd be a good thing.
So this is on the fire, the-
Yeah, on the fire station, on the, on a Fallon service contract extension, because it will involve a fee now, once they faced, the central fire station would be, because they would move and be housed there, and would pay an annual rent to the town. I think the sooner we get that locked in, the better off we are.
Okay. Anything else? Any other future agenda items? All right, seeing none. Community happenings, we have on the agenda. Does anyone have any community happenings? I know it's, we just hit you with it for the first time, so if you have anything, if you don't feel compelled.
So, just, Milton Music Fest is the 22nd and 23rd. That's become a very large event for this community, and it's free. So stay tuned, there'll be lots of posters and banners going up the next couple of weeks, so. It's a great event, some great music this year.
Anything else?
St. Mary's Carnival?
Oh, St. Mary's Carnival's this weekend. Yeah, that's Friday.
St. Mary's Carnival is this weekend?
Yep.
Betty White texted me tonight. She says, if I come, she'll buy me popcorn.
I saw them setting up their equipment today.
That's Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday night?
Friday, yeah. Five to nine, Saturday, 11 to nine, Sunday, 11 to seven.
I went up and watched it for about an hour with everyone in Canton this weekend. It is a pretty well-run operation, a very smooth operation, so.
Anything else?
Women's Road, Road Race? I don't have the date. Next week?
Next week, Tuesday night? Is it this Tuesday night, or is it a week from Tuesday night?
It's before we meet again. I apologize. I don't have the date, but you'll see, there's a poster right out in front of Town Hall promoting it.
I don't think anyone was watching us tonight anyway. They might have watched the Browns game.
Which we're going to do our best to-
We're getting there.
To get through. All right, nothing else, we can, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. All right, so at 9:20 or thereabouts, we will call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stotan Fund. And we have a, on the agenda, item 2, the Housing Subcommittee update on the town farm. And we have a memo that we had in our materials. So I believe Ms. Collins will lead us through this. Is that right?
Yes.
All right.
And there's one for you.
Thank you.
And if you want to hand us up. So on behalf of the Select Board's Housing Subcommittee, I've just handed you all a, a working timeline. At the top, you'll see some theme categories, plan, project, policy, community outreach. These things are a combination of items that were in the housing production plan and things that have, have come to us either because of circumstances or something someone has brought to us. And the timeline underneath shows you things that, that we're working on. The, the housing production plan, which we just voted on in the Select Board meeting, and also the, the town farm, RFP, RFQ, that, that we were asked to, to start considering. And so that's what I'm here to, to talk to you about. Originally, we sent Arlene Zunica, who was our Chief Procurement Officer, a list of engineering questions, which I have copies, I have four copies of, and you don't have to look at them now. But we, we were, we were hoping to see what we could do in-house in order to help with differing the cost of feasibility studies. And we're just, we don't have the capacity to do that work in-house, but you can see some of the things that, that we were trying to consider, such as what kind of traffic Governor Stotan, after being repaired, would be able to handle. Also, the intersection there with Canton Avenue, what, what could we really do safely there? And site work on the property and so forth. So the memorandum that you have, really, the purpose of that, it's not for us to go through and discuss these questions and the Housing Subcommittee's recommendations, but really just to present it to you this evening for your consideration and hopefully put this on a future agenda. I, I would hope that the next agenda, if we could, or the one after that, and invite the Housing Subcommittee, Affordable Housing Trustees, and other concerned stakeholders to, to talk about some of these things. So just to, to run through some of the considerations. The homes on Woodlot Drive are scheduled to be completed in, in two years. And in the Committee's opinion, we'd like permitting to be done by that time. We don't want people in the area to have to continue to go through a lot of-
To finish what, you don't have to start all over then.
It's just, yeah, and, and, and we'd love to have it all be, be finished and, and buttoned up, but, but permitting at a minimum. As I said, the town's engineering department doesn't have capacity to provide technical assistance. So that brings us to a third point. Development can occur in a number of ways, and the Committee requests guidance from the trustees. The Committee requests the trustees to find its preference for a process. Sample process sequences could be issuing an RFP, soliciting land use concepts and development plans, and choosing among the most attractive options that meet our criteria to conduct a feasibility study and then take an option to the Attorney General's Office for approval. Another possible avenue would be to conduct a feasibility study on specified land use or uses and development criteria, and consult the AGO with that. or uses and development criteria, and consult the AGO with that, and then issue an RFP or an RFQ for a developer. So we're seeking some guidance in that way. And again, that's not for us to discuss this evening, but to discuss in a future session. And the question of how to use the land to sell or to lease, what would benefit the trust the most? What uses do the trustees deem acceptable or unacceptable, or most acceptable? That would be very useful to know. So the committee does have a few recommendations that we agree upon. The process should begin with meeting with neighbors, especially those living on Governor Stotan Lane, prior to an RFP for development or an RFQ for qualifications to be issued. Two, to direct an RFP or RFQ to the affordable housing community. The trustees define important parameters, such as density and mix of incomes requiring management for rental properties. So again, not for us to discuss now, but just things that we're thinking about, that we'd like you to consider. Number three, this site-specific project may be able to be leveraged to educate and learn from in the wider community, and for us to learn from the wider community, not only regarding housing, but also changes in development in general. Number four, a long-term lease, so that the trustees can retain the land in order to maintain the historic significance of the property, and long-term flexibility are things that the Subcommittee is interested in. Number five, maintain the historic massing of buildings and inquire into options for restoration or incorporating architectural detail. And six, to create a community garden and open space to hearken back to the historical intentions and use of the land.
Do you think that'd be enough room for all of them?
Well, I think it depends upon design.
Okay.
So the ask actually is to agree to the next step of meeting at a soon-to-come future meeting with the Housing Subcommittee and the Affordable Housing Trustees, and perhaps Town Council or others that the trustees feel are pertinent.
I do like your idea that, and I've been going up there once a week, Pulte's really moving fast. They've moved the, I took a picture, I sent it to you, they've moved the pest, and they've put it on a new foundation next to the
Ben's Arms.
Ben's Arms House, which is, is it, it's not even, it's not even included in our, in our four, it's not on our existing, but it's on there now.
Right, we don't have any, we don't have any site plans or anything with that.
Right, we have no site plan or anything with this, but now it's there, it's sitting there, on a brand-new foundation. You bring up a very good point about moving on this unparalleled lengths versus letting Pulte finish, and then us starting with that. I don't think we need to do that. And so much of, it almost looks, the way it is now, for those members who haven't seen it, it doesn't look like two separate things, it looks like one big thing. You can drive in, get right through, you can go out Woodlot and go all the way out Governor Stotan and come out. I think now is the time to start to put together a vision and move on this versus waiting.
Any other thoughts, comments, or questions? So I guess what the ask is to put it on the agenda for some time in June, which I think we can easily do. I think there's a lot of support for that, so.
That's a good idea, I think it's
So we'll get that on, we'll get that on an agenda.
So I'm sure once the 22nd, we're
Thank you. And how do we coordinate with the other?
Invite them.
Just invite them, okay. I'm sure some members will be able to come, but I'll reach out quickly.
Yeah, well, let's, we'll decide on what the best date is, and then we can, we can reach out and see what works for the other boards as well.
Thank you.
And I asked Town Council what his availability was for the 12th and 26th. Haven't heard, haven't heard back yet, but I at least put it on his radar.
Okay.
In case we need Town Council.
So we'll, so we'll make sure we get it on for the 12th of the 26th. Okay. All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion's been made, seconded, always in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much. We will see you again on June 12th.